And the first topic is workshop session 6:30 PM. A discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Simply have a question on item one, public hearing one.
Mayor, this is the one, the item that the applicant has requested that the public hearing be continued to August 17.
Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, item two?
So for items two and three, Richard Lukey does have a presentation and we'll go over some more details related to the Northern Gateway Project. And he will really, the presentation will cover both items two and three.
During item two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is your question on item three? And then we're down to reports and then closed session. Okay. Now we're down to the, I don't know, continued discussion of sustainability plan. Who's taking that over?
This will be Mindy Weig and she's going to share her presentation with you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be continuing our previous conversation about our sustainability action plan and progress to date. This is a quick snapshot of what we had last time where we showed what the different steps will be and then what we will be talking about this evening. I'm going to skip through some of the background that we did talk about so that we have plenty of time to talk about the categories themselves and get feedback from council on that. So we'll be starting with slide 14 and diving right into the planned strategies and categories that we are proposing so far.
So if you recall... Mindy, we can't see your screen.
Oh, okay, let me try again. Let's see, this one here. How about now?
There you go. Very good.
Thank you for letting me know.
You're welcome.
You just missed scrolling, basically. But we'll dive right in where we stopped last time when we were talking about the overall focus categories. If you may recall, we talked about that we had eight initially, but then in looking at some of the issues that we're dealing with, with COVID and budget restraints and all, we really felt like it was relevant to add a ninth category that dealt with building some of our community relationships and doing some outreach and education separate from what was already going to be embedded in the different categories. Okay, so the first category and the first three that we did talk about last time, I will move through at a pretty good pace because we did discuss these, so I won't go point by point. I just wanted to give you a moment to kind of reorient yourself. And then we'll go in a little bit deeper on those that we weren't able to address in the prior meeting. So for energy, we have some different strategies that we're proposing both for the community and for our city facilities. We're building on some of the successes that we've already seen in our city facilities and properties and then going ahead and proposing some stretch goals there as well. And just as a reminder of the process on each one of these categories, I'll show you these proposed strategies. And then I'll move forward to the slide that shows you our expected benefits and then some examples of cities that have successfully implemented similar strategies in their communities. And then I'll move back to the original slide so you can review the strategies and provide any comments or feedback that you may have at that time. Okay, so for energy, obviously there's some expected emissions and economic benefits for this one, both for ourselves and our residents. And there's some great benchmark examples that exist for energy out in the community. For water, this is another one where we're building on some of the things that our public services group have already been doing quite well, looking at some of the regulatory components, maintaining that quality, maintaining the work that they're doing there. We're also looking at incorporating some of these stormwater management principles that are listed here into our drainage criteria manual update and into some of our best practices as a city as well. And that's something that's ongoing as well. And some of the benefits, again, you'll see improved water quality usage, water quantity usage, water quality out in our streams and our waterways. And then again, there's some walkable street benefits and mitigation of the urban heat island effect with some of the trees and green infrastructure components that are being proposed through some of these categories. And then some of the benchmark examples from other communities are listed here as well. So I believe this is where we stopped last time was on waste. It's important for us to acknowledge that this was an uncertain area before COVID even happened, so there were a lot of question marks with the markets about what we could get for recyclables and what that looked like for a return on investment there. And there's a lot of regional interest in this category as well. The Council of Governments is currently looking at a potential food waste initiative in partnership with the EPA. So there's a lot of different ways that we can engage beyond what we've done previously in this category. I really feel like along with public services with their input that we can leverage that contractor relationship as much as possible. And we can really take advantage of the information that we're getting from some of the regional representation that we have, such as our voting seat on our, excuse me, Resource Conservation Council through the COG that allows us to be really involved with some of these decisions at a regional level. If you recall, whenever we talked about these strategies last time, there's a whole range of what our involvement might be for each one of these different categories. It could be something as simple as providing the Council of Governments with a letter of support for these initiatives, saying, "We support what you're doing with food waste and we're interested in seeing more in terms of what best practices might look like." It could go from something as low range as that all the way up to, "This is something we think is really valuable and we want to put the money and the time into developing a program here locally." So it's important to keep in mind as we go that what that looks like hasn't been fleshed out quite yet, and that's part of what the five years will look like. We'll look at what's feasible as we go for each category, what we are able to tackle as a staff and as a community at each point in time. So hopefully that helps you feel a little bit more comfortable that we're not getting this huge laundry list of very intensive items to tackle all at once. Okay, so some of our expected benefits, obviously there's some economic savings depending on which programs that you do, there's some reduced waste streams, some reduced costs that could be associated with that as well. And then increasing our engagement with the business community, and that one in particular is related to, you'll notice a couple of examples down in the benchmarking where there's some green business leader certifications or programs. And that's one of the things that I think we could get a really high bang for our buck in terms of continuing to build those relationships with our business community, offering them resources, connecting them with grant programs or opportunities to be more sustainable in their workplace and hopefully notice some business retention benefits from that as Any comments on the waste category before we move forward to the next one?
Yes, Mindy, just kind of a quick comment. So by sheer coincidence, I ended up watching, I'd say sheer coincidence, watching a program about energy and waste just two days ago. Nice, long program, very well researched. And one of the key points that they made is that about 40% of the food that we buy ends up being thrown away. Out of that, 50, around 50% of it is vegetables and fruits. And so it kind of raised that question in my mind as I was listening to those numbers. What could we do to better educate people on how to reduce specifically that type of waste? Because that is a tremendous amount of wasted food and at the same time, we have people in the community that are actually in need of food. So I'm going to leave that back to you to comment.
Sure. Two thoughts come to mind right away. One is, you'll notice strategy four, it's an opt-in residential organics and composting collection program. And that would be a strategy where people would have a once a week collection of this food waste that would then be composted and potentially brought back to them for use in their homes. We've talked to a couple of different people that do this as an independent entrepreneurial project on their own. The other option that I would like to mention is something actually just that I sent in with just this past week too. It was a nationwide webinar that was talking specifically about food waste and it was all other sustainability directors and managers from communities around the U.S. And they were talking about how to be the connector between restaurants and businesses and grocery stores and how to get that plugged in with our food banks and our people that are truly in need in the community so that those usable items are not going to waste in the landfill. And there's a real interest in that at a national level and there's a lot of, a lot of programs that are starting to pop up about that. They had a really interesting conversation about whether there's liability involved in terms of donations that are coming from different places. So it was, it was a very good webinar and I think that there's a lot of potential, not just for us, but for our region, to look at food waste through a little bit different lens. So I definitely think that's something that has some merit to looking into a little bit further about what would work for us here in Lewisville.
I'd love to see us look at it, you know, how, because in the overall structure there, we reduce waste going into the landfill, we make more food available to people who need it, everybody wins, but it's trying to find the strategies to bring all that together.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that has feedback on the waste category before we move on?
Just, just a quick one. I like the strategy four, something like 30, 32% of the waste that goes into the landfill is organic and that, that's, the bulk of that is yard waste. So there's, I think, a low hanging fruit option there when we look to renegotiate the contract. The plastics reduction would be interesting. I'm just, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where that goes. And I would, I think you're talking to Fort Worth and their organics, there's, there is a business that's doing the organic buckets for food waste, right?
There is. The woman that I actually spoke with was originally here in Lewisville. And then I've also spoken to a woman out of Capel and then a woman that's working in Denton as well. So there's several different businesses that are popping up with this mode.
Now, the biggest one I'm aware of in North Texas is working with Fort Worth, but I'm not sure how that program's going. I know Fort Worth put a lot of, a lot of horsepower behind it two years ago.
There's one actually in Denton that just came up about a month ago. She came and presented to their council. It's called, an organization called TURN. And it's basically like an at-your-door type service where they have a truck that goes to different cities and people that opt in, they pick it up, and then the next week they bring processed compost and give you a fresh bucket.
Gotcha. Sounds like a lot of options, which is cool. The strategy three has not had a lot of good traction across the country where you earn points and are able to cash those points in. So I don't know if something's changed in the last year or two, but that one historically has been difficult to, because it's, it's a net, there, there's no savings really. You might get more recycling, but there's, there's additional cost built into that. So do you, where do you take that money and, and add it? Or do you just put it into marketing? I don't know the answer, but I just, historically, those, those programs, I know they didn't, they didn't do that, that well when attached to waste management's products.
Good feedback, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move forward to equity and inclusion. And this is one that we originally had, if you recall, back when we were looking at the STAR analysis. This was something that we did look at, what are we doing locally? What are we doing with our programs out in the community? But it also has received increased attention through the Black Lives Matters movement over the summer. And it's something that we feel like really merits a high spot within the sustainability plan. So there's two pages actually of strategies here. I'll walk through the first page and then switch over to the next page and we'll walk through those a little bit at a time. Strategy one, actively engage with low contact and low involvement population segments to increase that two-way communication, assess what their needs are and get those residents engaged and participating. This is something that we've already been doing with pretty good success with our Chin and Latino populations to date, but really extending that beyond those two populations and building on that success that we've seen and growing that communication and that two-way network is very, very important. Strategy two, creating and maintaining programs that address our aging housing stock, particularly in our low and moderate income neighborhoods. This is something that we've done historically, we've adjusted how we've approached it, but there's definitely opportunity, there will always be opportunity in this area. And it hits a number of different categories when we're looking at inclusion. It might hit racial dynamics, it might hit folks that are seniors that are in these areas that need some help with maintaining their homes. So there's a lot of benefit to continuing to look at how can we maintain that outreach in those programs that help support some of our most vulnerable residents. Strategy three, targeting those same communities for tree canopy planting campaigns. There's some side benefits to this outside of the statistics that are out there about trees bringing benefits to the community. They're cooling the neighborhoods, they're pleasurable to look at, but they're also helping to mitigate these urban heat island effects that we're seeing. And so making sure that our tree canopy is planted in a way that's equitable throughout our community and is not targeted in certain neighborhoods is very important. And this would help us assess that and make sure that we're making those good choices when we go to plant trees. For the next strategy four, increasing the accessibility to goods and services available at the neighborhood level. Again, this is looking at a number of different factors. It's looking at accessibility to grocery stores. Do we have food deserts? Are there available medical facilities or drugstores for these different neighborhoods? Do folks have adequate transportation to reach these goods and services? So is it close enough to walk from their neighborhood? So it's really taking into all, account all these different factors and making sure that we're being strategic in how we are looking at those neighborhood needs. Strategy five is continuing to look at our boards and commissions and looking at those demographics for the representative makeup of those. And do they reflect what we see in our overall community as everyone's voice heard as part of our process of governing? We do a good job, but being strategic and making sure there aren't any gaps is going to be really important moving forward. And then strategy six, making sure that we're taking a look internally as well and we're reviewing our policies, our protocols, our practices, and making sure that there's an inclusive and equitable lens that's applied to that so that we are, we don't have any blind spots, if you will, and we're being fair and inclusive in the way that we're doing our business as a city. So some of the expected benefits from policies like these, we have that improved sense of community, we have residents that are more engaged, we have a better understanding of what our residents need and what their goals are for what they want to see here in Lewisville. We have healthier residents that have access to healthier foods. We have an improved air quality, we have temperature drop from the additional trees that we would plant, and then we have ability to maintain that neighborhood desirability across the community and provide support for those residents that truly need it. And then some of the examples there, the city of Denton offers a tree rebate program where you can plant a tree up to, I think it's 50 gallons, and you get a $50 rebate towards that tree. So you can plant a more mature tree that has a bigger impact and has a greater livelihood of success. And then Beaverton, Oregon has a policy that actually looks at how to address the representation on boards and commissions, and they have a toolkit that provides city staff with some strategies to help them successfully tackle those topics. So moving back through here, I'll start on page one. Does anyone have feedback or thoughts on strategies one through three?
I did have a, kind of seems to fit within, within two and three. Are there any deficits in some of our older neighborhoods that when they were built, maybe they don't have the same level of infrastructure as other neighborhoods? And is there a way to create some equity with that? So whether that's sidewalks, whether that's neighborhood lighting, I know we have some neighborhoods that don't have the same lighting standards as, say, my neighborhood that was built in the early 70s. And might that be someplace where we can, we can have an effect as a city to create some equity?
Absolutely. I know what some cities have done successfully is they will actually look at sidewalks in particular from a school out in some of these older areas with the low and moderate income, and they'll make sure that there's that good point of transit to get from the school to the neighborhoods. And that's a good starting point for building that infrastructure in some of the older areas. I know that we do have an idea of where that is and we can definitely prioritize that as part of our...
I was also going to add, I mean, that's really your 10-minute walk to a park principles that you guys have adopted and how we're focusing on that in the triangle for the Triangle Park. And so we're still moving forward with that. In the next couple of meetings, you'll have that likely on your agenda for approval. But that being said, that's the whole, that's exactly what Councilman Gilmore, you, you're talking about.
Well, and, and more to the point, not to just get wrapped around sidewalks, but are there other amenities that we have in newer neighborhoods because it was part of how that neighborhood was built? McKenzie-Hemry, for example, has much less lighting than a neighborhood built in the So those would be, and I don't know, I don't know what all the answers are, but is there, is there a way to go in and say, "Okay, here's a neighborhood standard that was built in 2010, here's where all the rules." Have we got neighborhoods that are sub to that set of rules? And are there things that the city could do to bridge that gap? Because we think it's important now because it's part of the rules now, right?
Right.
So sidewalks are just a low hanging fruit that I know we're already kind of dealing with.
Go ahead, Neil.
Is that Kristen?
Yes.
Go, go ahead, Kristen.
Okay. I was, so I was actually going to, I'm glad that Claire mentioned the 10-minute walk to a park because we don't specifically mention that in here, but I think that that's a big part of the, the whole reason for the 10-minute walk to a park initiative is equity and inclusion. So I don't know if they need to overlap, but you know, with, to add to what Chi Jake was saying, I was, when I think about that, I think about open spaces, just having an open space within a walkable distance. And one thing that I've been thinking about a lot since we had our meeting, actually the last one we had in person, when we were talking about the, the school district and trying to help some of the families that don't have access to internet, especially with, with things going the way they are right now, access to internet is a huge, it's very polarizing. If you have it, you know, it's great. If you don't, you are way behind. And so I don't know where that would fit in here, but I, when I think about what we could do, I think about having maybe even little pocket parks or just little mini public spaces that could have internet access so that, you know, if you can't make it to the library to use the internet, you could make it to this space to use the internet if you needed to.
A great suggestion, thank you.
So, so I had one other thought, and this goes to lighting sidewalks and other amenities. It's, it seems natural to assume that a neighborhood that hasn't had an amenity and other newer neighborhoods are getting that amenity, that that neighborhood would want that amenity. But as an example, I can tell you that Indian Oaks, at least the folks that I know of there and talk to would not probably want sidewalks. My neighborhood definitely would not want sidewalks. So before we jump in and assume that a community or a neighborhood, because it doesn't have an amenity that's featured in more modern neighborhoods should be there, I think it, we're obligated to at least talk to the citizens and make sure they want that amenity.
Okay, move on to the second page. And I did want to add that it's not clearly called out under one of these strategies, but obviously the talks that we've been doing with the mayor's commission, you know, are something that definitely fits under this category as well. It's not clearly laid out as a strategy, but definitely something that would be a benefit here. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move forward then. Health and wellness, this is one of those interesting categories that has a lot of layered benefits that you might have one program that has touches of multiple different departments, multiple different stakeholders in the community, and multiple benefits for one initiative. Some of the things that fall under this one could definitely go in other areas, the same with when we get to the extending the green or green space one, definitely there's ones in there that could go in other areas as well. So the first strategy, encouraging and supporting health and wellness programs for city staff. We're already doing many health and wellness programs, but how could we continue to hit those benchmarks and, and keep a healthy staff? How can we increase our local food production with measurable goals? Where do we have community gardens? Are there opportunities for a pocket community garden in certain neighborhoods? How can we eliminate food deserts within the Lewisville community? We talked a little bit about that one in the last slide. How can we encourage community health and wellness, looking at our Thrive memberships and programming, looking at community-wide walking and biking, everyone, it seems to be getting outdoors a lot more these days as we're staying home more. And how can we really encourage those types of fitness initiatives? And then again, looking at that 10-minute walk to a park or recreation center amenity or program, how can we make sure that what we're doing is accessible to everyone no matter what their mode of transportation is? And then the last strategy here is one that I feel like has a lot of potential because again, there's a lot of partnerships where people are already doing things related to this. What is the hospital doing? What is Texas AgriLife doing? They have a lot of great classes on how to cook fresh foods. What's the school district doing? How can we really build up these local health initiatives that are supporting our community members? And then some of our expected benefits, we'll have some cost savings and improved morale at the city level, we'll have healthier employees and residents that are connected with each other as they're out moving about. I know some of you like to get out and use the bike trails in the community and you really do build relationships through that, have that improved sense of community from those touchpoints. And then the benefit of reduction in auto trips, you know, we're losing those emissions, it's improving our traffic flow, less traffic on the roads, lots of different things that we see there as a benefit. And there's a lot of different examples here, both locally and nationally that we can pull from. The city of Dallas actually has a partnership right now with... The city of Dallas actually has a partnership right now with Baylor Scott &amp; White that looks at food deserts in South Dallas in particular, and they have some really cool approaches to how they're strategizing to really focus with some of these longstanding problems in that area of their community. The city of Detroit actually is, has more urban agriculture than any other city in the U.S., and they've used these little pop-up community garden areas to address these food deserts and really empowered people to learn how to get the skills to deal with their own food desert issues. And then Santa Fe and Austin also both have wellness and food-related programs that really have been successful. Austin's in particular has been around for a number of years, and they've really got it down. So any feedback on these particular ideas related to health and wellness?
Council, I might mention, you've got your annual health report on the agenda tonight, and you'll see, it talks a great deal about the city's wellness plan that we've been emphasizing for a number of years. So I do think we already have quite a few successes there, but we'll just continue to focus on that, and Thrive will give us some opportunities for that.
Okay, moving forward. Transportation, this is another category where we can continue to build on what we're doing great already. We have been a leader in the region when it comes to our clean cities, clean fuel vehicles, and we're continuing to right-size our vehicles and continuing to add EVs to our fleet. We're also looking to increase the availability of our EV charging stations at our city facilities. So we have public-facing facilities that have that EV charging also. So that's, there's things that we're already doing, but we'll go a little bit further and do even better with that. With our code rewrite, one of the things that we are looking at is how can we encourage charging stations at private new developments and redevelopments, whether it's multifamily, whether it's hotels, motels, things like that? How can we make sure when there's people that are going to be there a long period of time, that there's an opportunity for a charging station at some point in the future to go in there to help support that? TA, the time before, on the 15th, when we spoke about this, you've got a great presentation that kind of got you up to speed with some of the things that are being discussed through DCTA, including some of these last mile connections, looking at micro mobility. So there's a lot of creative ways that we can continue to engage with DCTA and look at what our ridership is needing, and identifying those gaps and needs in our community and making sure that everyone has access to that. And then when we look at strategy six, providing alternate modes of transportation, including electric scooters and e-bikes, this is something that has a lot of potential in a smaller area. If we look at, say, Old Town, and we look at trying to activate Old Town between down here where the MCL is and all the way down to the train station, is there a way to put a little geo fence around it where we have scooters that are only active just in that little area? And would that invigorate it? Would it become a point for people to come out and use it? You know, just thoughts that we can look at, that we haven't looked at yet, that might provide those alternative transportation modes in an interesting way in our community. And then again, continuing to adopt more complete streets policies that are more inclusive of those multimodal transportation options and support that in our community as well. So some of the expected benefits, there's multiple ways to get to work, including public transportation that's functional and effective and works for our residents' needs. Looking for support or increase in business support and sales tax if we do see an increase in tourism, in the example that I just gave for Old Town, we're seeing improved emissions, improved air quality, and then employee transportation and retention. Looking at, not just for the city, but also for some of our major employers, is there a way that we can help support getting their employees to work in a way that's sustainable? And there's some examples here of some of the different ways that transportation can be sustainably implemented in different communities. So any questions or feedback on some of these strategies related to transportation?
I have a comment. I'm not, I'm not completely sold on number six. I just, I'm envisioning electric scooters and bicycles scattered all over the place like we saw in Dallas. Not to say that that's exactly what would happen, but that's just where my mind goes. I'm not completely opposed to it, but I'm not sure that it's not going to end up being a bigger headache for us than a benefit. But as far as where we're going with two and three, with the EV charging stations, I think, I think that's the way it's going. I think it's still a ways out, but we, if we're going to get them out in the community and become a reliable transportation mode, for, you know, for people to use electric vehicles, we have to have places where they feel confident that they can get around and have a charging station where they're going to go. I think it's still early, but I think we absolutely have to start doing that stuff now.
I think we're in a unique position with that as well, with our proximity to 35, with our annex and our city hall being so close to 35. It's easy to put a public-facing charging station there for folks that are passing through, and it pops up on the map as an option for them, and it would definitely get utilized. Any other feedback?
It probably seems a little early to worry about this, but I look at public charging stations, and I wonder 25 years down the road, when we decide that everybody who has a vehicle is electric and we're footing the bill for everybody to drive around, how we're going to take those away?
Actually, you can set them up in a number of different ways at the front end. So you can decide on how much you want to bill the public, whether it's a city that wants to completely absorb the cost of charging, or you can pass the entire cost onto the consumer, or it can be anything in between. So in terms of paying for people to charge, that's really a policy decision that you can make based on what those costs are like. And the really neat program that they have right now with the EV charging stations, the first iteration that first came out 20 years ago, people installed those, that was it, that was your charging station, and you had to get a whole brand-new one if you decided that wasn't the way you wanted to go anymore. And they have a new kind of business model that's different from that, that's much more like a cellphone trade-in. If you've decided you want to upgrade your cellphone, you can upgrade your charging station the same way. This is an older model, it's not working for what our needs are anymore. We can upgrade it without penalty to the newest model within that contract. So there are some options to not be saddled with an old clunky piece of equipment that we'll be with long down the line. But that's the kind of thing, once we get into some of these different strategies, that we'll really kind of flesh that out as we get to that phase of our sustainability plan, where we're looking at that being an option of what we're going to implement over that fiscal year. So we'll really dive into those details and concerns and come back with some data for you to make decisions at that point as we move forward as well. Okay, move forward here. Category seven, this is one of those that probably weeds itself through the 2025 plan and the sustainability plan the most. There's a lot of overlap in different areas, just because I feel like this is such a big core piece of our identity here in Lewisville, that it's hard not to have that kind of go through. So the first one, increasing engagement with Lila. And this one would rely heavily on what their plan is. I know they're developing a plan for the best uses of Lila and how to reach out to our public and get people engaged there, so it would definitely dovetail with that, but would be in support of that with what our strategies are in sustainability. Then looking again at how are we increasing our connectivity between our key parks, our green spaces, our bike lanes, sidewalks, et cetera? And that also kind of gets back to that 10-minute walk idea of, are we connected? Are there dead ends that people have to route all the way back around? How can we better manage the way that our community is laid out and able to navigate through our green space? And again, supporting those initiatives that align with the goals with the 10-minute parking estimate that we already have, and then focusing again particularly in our low to moderate income communities and looking at how can we make sure there's access to green space that's equitable in these areas as well. Okay, the next strategy, increasing the number of trees that we have planted by residents, commercial businesses in the city, having that true engagement campaign and looking at what we can do. And that dovetails into strategy four, looking at a tree canopy study. If you look at the numbers as far as tree canopy percentage for Lewisville right now, it looks like we're in a great place, and that's because we're really fortunate that we have Lila on the east side of town, and that skews our data. If you were to take Lila out of that analysis and look at what the tree canopy study looks like west of 35, you would get a very different picture. And so having a clearer idea of where we have trees and where we don't would allow us to set some goals to increase our tree coverage and then preserve and maintain those trees that we do have here already. So I think that that should be something that's definitely a key piece of our strategy for extending the green moving forward. Some of the benefits, we're again increasing our canopy cover, that's acting as a carbon sink for our emissions, we're improving our community, we have our healthier residents out there in the green space enjoying it. And then there's a number of ecological benefits that we see. There's new habitat, it's treating the stormwater, it's stabilizing the banks of the streams that are coming through our community, and there's a number of really great examples of what this might look like in a community. One in particular that I thought was, or actually two, that I thought were really remarkable, Plano offers what they call a big tree registry, which is residents can propose a tree to be registered under this big tree registry, and it offers a layer of protection for what they consider to be historic trees in their community. And it's a way to preserve some of these older trees that we do have that have been here a very long time. And then Atlanta looks at health equity through those urban green space areas. And Councilwoman Green, this might be something that's of interest to you. They have a whole initiative around this and some really great research and programming related to how can you have health outcomes tied to greater green space in high urban density areas? So it's a really interesting program that they have. Any comments or questions related to our green space category seven?
Just that we talked about a tree registry program before, and it died, and I think part of the reason it died is it died out of a panic of what registering a tree might incur as an unwanted consequence. I don't remember, but I remember it died, and I was disappointed.
Moving forward. City operations, this is another area where there's a lot of successes that we've seen through our facilities and our fleet personnel that have given us a number of benefits related to energy savings and cost savings and fuel savings today, and I don't anticipate that One of the things that I think that we could add to that is looking at how can we improve what we're doing in terms of our internal city recycling in each department? How can we create some measurable goals there that really kind of set the bar for what we expect each other to do here internally? If we're expecting our residents and our community members to do it, then are we also doing that in our workhouse, if you will? Improving, continuing to improve the average overall fleet efficiency of our city vehicles, this has been a steady improvement through facilities and fleet. We did get upgraded to silver for our clean fleet this year from bronze, so we're definitely moving up in that area as well. But just setting that bar to continue to grow. And then implementing policies that impact and lower our city energy costs, there's a number of different ways that we could do that, from large scale all the way down to small scale, looking at a building and seeing what our feasible standards should be for city temperature, for instance. Creating emissions inventories to really understand a baseline for future policy decisions based on what we see locally and what we see regionally. And then improving our purchasing practices by continuing to add sustainability priorities to those green purchasing policies that we already have, and really kind of refining that conversation on how we can continue to get better at it. Expected benefits, obviously cost savings, our waste stream improves, we have better morale, we have really good data so that we can inform our future decision-making, and then we're prepared for future city needs. And then there's some examples here of different things that other cities in the metroplex have done related to temperature, related to emissions inventories as well. Any questions and comments on city operations? Move forward to the last one, which is community education and outreach. And this is the one that came out of that idea that because we're probably going to be limited in this first year in our ability to engage from a budget standpoint, that we really wanted to look at a way to build relationships that would serve us through later phases of the sustainability plan. And so looking at where can we have those relationships with those key community partners that will really help us build our sustainability initiatives in the community? And then looking at how are we doing things internally? How can we strengthen our cross-departmental collaborations to make sure that sustainability is infused in what we're already doing and how we're already reaching out in the community? Being sure that we're disseminating about information about sustainable practices in different ways, through traditional media, through creative marketing, looking at how can we really touch people in ways that they're going to receive it? And then looking at where are those gaps in knowledge in the community? Are we even talking about the right things? Are we using the most effective platforms? Are we hitting underrepresented groups? How are we touching our formal and informal community networks? Are we tied into the Chamber of Commerce? Are we tied in to some of our members of the faith community? Not just from how we as a city are doing it, but we as a community, I mean, rather a sustainability department, how are we also making those same touch points so that that message is getting out? And then creating a dynamic sustainability webpage that's incorporating metrics and educational resources. So it's really easy for people to go to and see where we are in these different areas, and also see some educational resources that they could tap into. Some of the expected benefits, we're going to engage a broader audience than maybe we have previously. Providing support for educators, I think this one is going to be increasingly important as we have some uncertainty about if educators will be using a remote learning platform? Is there a way for us to position ourselves to help with some of the contents? Could we, you know, do a share screen and do a quick little lesson for the teachers to help support what they're doing? Is there a way to kind of bottle a different type of outreach than what we've done previously? And that's going to also give us some greater community understanding and buy-in for what Lewisville's overall community goals are. And here's some examples here of very effective local programs that do this very well, in particular with schools. So just rolling back, any thoughts or feedback on this particular category or how we might Okay, keep moving forward then. That leads us to our timeline. We are right here doing our update. The next steps that we'll see, we'll go back to the employees, take some of the feedback that we have tonight, and we'll look at our green team and our focus group that we specifically pulled together, and get some really focused feedback on what they think might work. Again, I'll also look to them to provide some of the departmental goals and objectives so we can make sure that what we're doing is in alignment with what matters to individual departments and what they're already working on. Take all of this together, come up with our rough draft of our sustainability action plan, we'll get feedback from some of our key stakeholders out in the community, polish it up, get the it up, get the final sustainability plan, and then we'll bring that to you for action. To give you a little bit of insight on what these employee focus groups look like, we have some key employees from the departments that are most involved already with sustainability initiatives. They have a really good understanding and baseline of what sustainability means in Louisville and they're doing it every day. We'll develop the implementation actions that will help achieve the goals that we're receiving from y'all. And then that identified implementation action will be included in the plan. So you see this little snapshot to the right of the slide? This was taken from the City of Denton Sustainability Plan, just to give an example of what that would look like. So the strategy is what we just talked about. Under each category, I gave you several different strategies. So this would be one of the strategies, for instance. There would be some information about why this is something worthwhile, what are the benefits that we could see from it, and how do we plan to proceed with that? Underneath that, there's some very measurable implementation actions. These are the steps that will get us to this successfully. And then over here, it gives us a little bit of an idea about what is the cost, what is the timeline for it, who are the partners that are involved, which category might it fall under, what's the priority, what are the overall benefits that we could see as a community? So it gives you a quick snapshot of what that strategy does within the plan. And that's what our focus group is going to help us develop with that information. Does that make sense? So again, for our next steps, this timeline will need to be amended just a little bit because we were not able to finish our presentation last time. So we'll just bump these last dates down just a little bit. But I still hope to bring the draft to you in October of the year. So this is still where we're headed. We have a lot of work done already. So we'll just need to incorporate that employee feedback and that external stakeholder feedback. And then we should have a polished draft for you to see soon. Do you have any questions or thoughts? Okay, well, thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation. Senator Mayor, the next item is discussion of Western Days virtual option.
Yes, sir. And we have James Conkey to cover this. As you remember, at our prior meeting, we did make the decision, council made the decision, council Western Days, and he asked us to bring back a way to perhaps look at doing this virtually. And staff has done that. And James will walk you through the presentation.
Senator, I have to share.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am back to talk about one of our favorite recurring topics, and that is Western Days. There we go, thank you. Looks a little different than what I used to. Difference is, in the past, we talked about Western Days trying to draw as many people as we could downtown. Today, we're talking to you about a Western Day unlike any we've ever seen before, one that would draw not as many people downtown. But hopefully, if we afford with it, bring a lot of attention to Louisville, possibly beyond the borders that we previously have. So I'm going to go through what we've developed as a potential option for you. And feel free to chime in if you hit a point where you aren't certain of what I'm trying to say. So just a quick recap, obviously COVID-19 has changed our world at this point. And one of those changes is the cancellation of a lot of special events, in fact, all the big ones. State Fair is canceled, Great Fest is canceled, Assin' Oktoberfest canceled the day after I sent this submission in. So large events are not happening right now, partly because the governor's order, partly because how do you do them safely? City Council, for our most recent meeting, opted to cancel all of our special events throughout at least October. So Western Days is not going to happen, but we were told to come back with a virtual option. So we're looking at an event that would be held live and streamed live, but without an audience, somewhat akin to what some of the major sports leagues are doing right now. We'd produce it at MCL Grand. That's our version of the NBA bubble. We'll call it the Western Days bubble. Could either be one day or two days. We'll talk about those options in a minute. It would be entirely streamed with no charge access to feed, so no audience. The only people inside would be our production crew, our staff, performers, event staff. You can see there that the fixtures that make it an outdoor festival wouldn't happen. And we chose MCL Grand because it's easy to control access into that building. So it's weatherproof. If it rains, we don't care, we're inside. It has a lot of the staging and stage equipment, lights, sound, and so forth that we normally would have to rent. So that saves a lot of festival overhead by doing it in that facility. And it's a very flexible space with multiple performance spaces. We can do a very quick turnaround with these performances instead of having to have applause when we change the back line or bring in a new band or new performer. We also could use video promotion between each set of performances as a way to promote Louisville, promote Old Town, promote our sponsors to an online audience that in theory is global, certainly far beyond what we would normally reach. So talking about MCL Grand again, we would use the performance hall, we would use the black box, we would use the recital hall, and we would use at least one set of classrooms, each for different types of activities. Performance hall would be the bands that normally would be on our main stage, the headliners and the lead-in acts that you see on the big stage at Main, pardon me, at Mill and Church would be on performance hall. As a comparison, our performance hall stage is actually larger than the stage we rent for Western Days. So the bands we've talked to informally, we're very happy to know they have more space to work with. And we already have theatrical lighting, can bring more lighting in. So technically, it's actually a superior space from the stage itself. Black box, where we would put the performances, they usually were on the community stage or on the ceiling stage. So they're smaller bands, local, regional bands, a mix of music. You know, the bench stage had been our rock, blues, jazz, Motown type of stage. The Huffines has been our country, but not big-name country. So we would have a nice blend there. Recital hall, we would bring in our Western decor in that room and do our Western-themed activities. The gunfighters could come in, the indigenous dancers could come in, and so forth. So we'd have some of that, the trick rover, for example. These are not 45-minute performances. They're sometimes five to eight-minute performances, but they're nice builder and they provide the atmosphere of Western Days. The classroom space would have a couple of possible uses. One in particular is the World's Mollie Eating Championship. We'll talk more about that in another slide. And also possibly cooking demonstrations, where we'd need to talk with our sponsor, Bright Realty, to see what their thoughts are on that. So we'd use various parts of the building and basically recreate all the entertainment that exists at a regular Western Days festival. Now, there's three options that we've looked at, options A, B, and C. A and B are single-day events. A is roughly 11:00 in the morning till about 11:00 at night, and we just have all of our performers and we squeeze them in, just fit as much as we possibly can. So a lot of the performances during the day might only be 30 minutes, 25 minutes, instead of the 45 to 60 they get now. And the headliners would have a full run. Option B is the same, but it's a smaller window. It's more like a 1:00 to 10:30 schedule, or maybe a 2:00 to 10:30. So it's tighter. And so there's fewer performance slots. Just a, you'll see on the schedule slide, you'd have 15 instead of 18 performers. Option C is a two-day event, like we've had in the past, Friday, Saturday, same lineup of entertainment, but now you have longer slots, you have more gaps in the middle, you could repeat some of the heritage acts. It's the closest thing we could do to Western Days inside MCL Grand. Now, we'll talk about budget in a minute, but what's interesting is these three have essentially the same budget. And I realize that probably seems counterintuitive. Why would a two-day event and a one-day event have the same basic price tag? And it's because when you think about a two-day event where your cost increase comes in, it's all the infrastructure you have to rent, your staging, your lighting, your sound system, your fences, your portals, your golf carts, all those things, we don't have to rent those when we're inside the MCL Grand. We own the building, we own the stage, we own the sound and lights, don't need golf carts. So you take a whole bunch of your infrastructure cost away, and those are the ones that normally going from a one-day event to a two-day event, you'll see about a 40% to 50% increase in costs. That doesn't happen here because the vast majority of your cost in this budget is going to be fixed numbers for entertainment and for marketing and support. So this is just a sample timeline of the option A. This is squeezing as much as we can. You see, we've got seven bands on the main stage, we've got six bands on the black box stage, we have five heritage acts going on in the other room. And it's just shorter windows. They have maybe 25 minutes or at most 30 minutes to perform before the next one pops up. In fact, if you look in the center column, band number two starts at 2:00 PM. Well, in your left-hand column, that band starts at 2:30. So band number one would start at 2:00, they're done at 2:25. So 25 minutes set. It gets longer later in the evening because of the headliners, you're paying them more, you want more time with them, but you have shorter acts during the day. This is the fewer performers, a slightly shorter timeline, but not dramatically shorter. You'll see this one starts at noon and the last performer goes on at 10:00 instead of 10:15. But by having fewer performers, they have longer performances. So looking again in the black box, band number two starts at 2:45. And on the left-hand column, performance hall, band number two starts at 3:30. So you've got a 45-minute window. They had 40 minutes to perform, not quite, but almost twice as much time as before. So a little bit more leisurely, more exposure for those performers, but only 15 instead of 18 performances. Two-day schedule gives you all those performances and then some. You have plenty of time for each. Your activities on Friday, roughly 5:00 to 11:00. Your activities on Saturday, roughly 11:00 to 11:00. And it just puts everybody with a, you have both. You have a larger number of performances, but they also have a longer amount of time. And you have a little bit of repeat there on the heritage group. One of the good things about MCL Grand, we already had that building booked for that weekend because of Western Days, so we're not bumping anybody out of that building. The building already was set aside for this festival. So if we're not doing our festival there, there's no activity in the building. So this would be essentially like a television show, if you will. It's actually been done in other places. People watching it on the stream, it would be streamed through the internet and through our cable channel. People watching on the stream are watching a series of acts, like a variety show. One act, then a very brief video interlude, 30 seconds, and then another act, 30 seconds, another act. They can, they'll have a schedule, they can watch only the acts they care about, or they can sit and watch the whole thing. Or if you're a restaurant or a business that has people coming in and out, you can have it running all day and they can take a look at it whenever they happen to be in. The, you'll see here a link that is, I believe this is in your packet. If you want to take a look at it, you can see how this has looked for the BBC program later with Jules Holland. We've actually found a company we can work with, they're in the area, that has the equipment and the technology to stream all these activities live to, again, our social media outlets, to all of our various websites, so the city website, the festival website, the Visit Louisville website, the Louisville Live website, and also our cable channel. So you don't have to be on the internet. If you have, if you have either Spectrum or Frontier at home, you can watch it there. So here's the Mollie Championship. It's interesting, when we first talked about making some changes, and we weren't sure if there's going to be an onsite festival or not, we pitched the idea of doing a series of flights. Instead of having 12 eaters up on one stage eating all at once, which is messy in the best of times, and certainly it's not physically distanced, we suggested three flights of four. You start earlier in the day with four eaters that are kind of at the bottom of the list, the ones that are not very likely to win. In the harlots of major eating, they're called table enders. They're at the ends of the table, but they have a shot and they're having a good time. So they compete, you put their scores up on a big board like a golf tournament, you totally reset and clean the room, bring in the next group of four, and then reset, clean, bring in the last group of four. That's where your top-ranked eaters are. So still 12 eaters, still 10 minutes, still winners, still pay the top six. But now it's actually spread out over time. So there are some advantages to that. In fact, when we told Major Eating, that's what we had in mind, the response that Darren got from his contact was, "That's a great idea, we're going to start doing that." So apparently they're going to start doing it at some of their other events. They are prepared to do what we've described. They have not started registration yet. It was scheduled to start next week, so they still could stay on schedule. And with fewer competitions going on, there's a better chance we might get some pretty good names coming in if we were to do this. Cooking demonstrations, we have some options here also. Now, Castle Hills is, pardon me, yes, it is Castle Hills, but it's through Bright Realty. They are the sponsor of the cooking demonstration. So we've already had a very brief conversation with them to see if they'd be open to various options. And at this point, they are open to it, but they haven't committed. So we could set up a demonstration kitchen in the other set of classrooms at MCL Grand, which does have a cost. So we'd rather not do that if we can find another way. And we have two other ways. One is a live demonstration at the kitchen of the chef. So for example, if Castle Hills wanted it to be the chef at Lacy Castle Hills Pub House, we send a two-person crew with a camera and a streaming device, and we just live broadcast the cooking demo at their kitchen. Gives them great exposure. They love this idea, but they haven't committed. Or if it's going to be difficult to do a live stream, and these cooking shows, where they don't show you behind the scenes, they actually cook every dish twice. When they put the one in the oven, they're showing you, they reach in and pull out the one that's finished. It's like a two-second cook. So they might want to pre-record it. You get a little bit more polished of the product that way. And they can, again, pre-record it at their kitchen to give them the added exposure. So we found a way to do this also if the sponsor wants to continue this program for this year. Here's some of the health and safety protocols. We already ran through the big picture health and safety protocols with you last meeting, so I'm not going to go through it in great detail. But these are a little bit different because it's at MCL Grand. So it's a combination of our festival protocols and our MCL Grand protocols. Again, it'd be in the Western Days bubble. So there would not be an audience for these shows, it'd be participants only. Everyone going into the building, have their temperature taken the first time they come in. If it's a two-day event, they'd get tested both days. We would ask the performers in the black box to bring their own microphones, which for these performers, they all have them. Bring their own microphones, our system can plug into pretty much anything they've got. You can bring a Mr. Microphone, we can make it work. And that way, we're not having to worry about cleaning their microphones, they have their own, they can yell at their call all they want, and they take it with them when they leave. Performance hall stage, remember, we're going to do performance hall, then black box, then recital hall, then back over to performance hall. Plenty of time between acts for us to do a full sanitation of the stage area and any shared equipment, including the sound equipment. Anybody going through the building, going to wear a mask, just in keeping with Executive Order GA29? We would allow a few media members come in and cover the event. We want to welcome our media members. They also would have temperature checks and face coverings. Any catering that's done, like when we serve dinner for a band, it would be served by staff, not by a self-serve, no buffets. Probably be box lunches or packaged lunches. If not, we would have servers in there with face coveries and gloves to serve the meal and hand the plate to a person. And then finally, even the bands themselves, we had some bands in the past that had brought 30, 40, 50 people with them to Western Days. That would not be allowed here. We tell them in advance, limit your number, tell us the people who are going to be here, the number, and don't exceed it. Because we want to make sure physical distancing is not a challenge for us. No meet and greets, dressing room spaces only for headliners in the performance hall. We'd have a contracted cleaning crew come in throughout the day to do disinfecting sweeps around the buildings, especially the bathrooms. And then some areas would be only for staff, like the admin office, no people in and out there. So these are some standard protocols that we've seen in a lot of our buildings. Now, the intent of Western Days is to promote our Old Town District and our Old Town businesses. We want to make sure that if we do this virtual festival, we still get advantage of promoting our Old Town District and businesses. I mentioned earlier about videos. We would have some videos in that mix that would be promoting Old Town as a place to visit, as a place to eat, as a place to shop, as just a venue, a destination. But in addition, we have this list of things that could be done. Right now, it'd be difficult for a business, I'm just going to pick one at random, let's say Outkies. It might be difficult for them to have a watching party, but we don't know what the status of state orders will be when we get to the end of September. If it's possible, they could have a watching party. Remember, it's a live stream, it's a free live stream. So they're getting all their entertainment. So they're getting all their entertainment at no cost. And then it wouldn't be a restaurant. We have businesses in there that have meeting spaces, We Plus You and Flourish. They have large rooms. They could do watch parties there as well. If they do food, we'd encourage them to get that food from local businesses, trying to maintain the benefit within our area. In addition to the Old Town videos, we can do videos specific, not advertising individual businesses, but advertising business classifications or groups. So we get them some airtime on there. We can do a live cutaway. If there's a watch party going on, I think Alki's last time, let's do Sloan and Williams. There's a watch party at Sloan and Williams. We've got that mobile crew I told you about, the two-person crew with a camera. We might probably get down to one if it's in Old Town. We cut away to them between shows. Hey, while the Bob Troyer Trio gets ready to perform, we're going to visit with Matt over at Sloan and Williams. And Matt sits Sloan and Williams, shows the crowd having a good time, says, "Hey, come on down. It's a great place to be." And now, back to the action. And then the Bob Troyer Trio comes on stage. You're booked, by the way. We have you scheduled. And then finally, we would encourage our food and beverage businesses to have what we call flash takeout specials. So say from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Saturday, that Old Town Winehouse would have a special, maybe buy one, get one free flatbread pizzas. If you come in and give the secret word, whatever the word is, and we would use that word a lot on the broadcast, maybe even get a couple of the bands to stay up from the stage, so that if you're watching the broadcast, you see them say, "Hey, come down to Old Town Winehouse, say the code word, get buy one, get one free flatbread pizzas." That might cause people to come and do a takeout. We takeout orders only, special discount, some flash specials. We're open to other ideas. This is just the first things that we came up with, and we certainly want to talk to our businesses downtown to see what other ideas they have as well. They've got to be able to benefit from this. That's really the point of having Western Days to begin with.
So might I just suggest that, since it is virtual, we don't necessarily have to limit it to Old Town businesses, but we can go out. You know, there are other venues around the city that would probably be amenable to live streaming and showing the... Showing Western Days, so.
Absolutely. We had not really thought down that path, but you're right. There are venues that I think would welcome that. So we certainly could expand that reach, especially for watch parties and live cutaways. So budget considerations. It says there, the budget would be lower if we do a one-day option. But by lower, you're talking about a $20,000, maybe $25,000 difference. So it's not a significant difference, but it would be a little bit lower for a one-day versus two. Entertainment costs are probably going to be pretty close to what you see, but maybe a little lower. Two of our three headliners already have said, if we go virtual, they're in. Our primary headliner, the big name that was going to bring in 30,000 people for us, they have said they're... They don't feel comfortable traveling. They're fine doing a stream if they can do it from their own hometown in Tennessee. And we said that kind of defeats the whole purpose of the event, but let's talk. So we're talking to them. If they walk away, we would recover our money from them, and that would be more than enough money to go out and get a replacement. Right now, bands are not doing a lot of booking, so our promoter, Brad Weiss, believes that we could get a very good replacement, maybe for a little bit of a savings. So there might be $20,000, $25,000 in savings there also. We just don't know yet. Festival sponsors, there's more than $50,000, $53,500 worth of sponsorships that we would have to either refund or restructure. And we've reached out to those sponsors, and two of them already have said, "No, if it's virtual, we don't want to do it." And one of them said, "Just push it off to the next year." One of them said, "No, let's let's just not pay the sponsorship this year and get back together next year." So we know that some of that's going to go away. All the rest of them have been interested. Some of them have said, "Absolutely. They're on board." I'll give a plug to one, Southern Comfort Mechanical and Air. They... We're talking to them about ways to involve them in this process, and they were very open to it. So we think we can keep most of those sponsors. It's just going to be a different structure. So we'd give them different value. Again, promotional videos to thank our sponsors, live cutaways are a possibility, naming rights for a headliner performance. Again, Southern Comfort presents the Bob Troyer Trio. Finally, so we get to the budgets. So the Western Days budget was $696,000 this year. A virtual or streaming option would cost about $348. And I'll show you that on the next slide, how that breaks out. Remember, $348 is for any of those three options, but one-day options, a little bit lower, but not a lot, because all of the costs that would increase from one day to two are cut out. One thing we've talked about, if at that point, the governor has relaxed the rules on gatherings, on outdoor gatherings, we could potentially do a physically-distanced watch party at Railroad Park. It would encourage additional costs because there's no large screen out there, but it could be done. So we're keeping that open as a possibility and then move forward. If that's something the council thinks it's a must-have or a should-have, we can do more research on it. We throw it out there so that you know we're not giving up on the idea of gatherings. We just are not convinced that by the end of September, it'll be a safe time to do gatherings. Here's the budget breakout I showed you. Again, the entertainment is $240,000 out of the $348. Just to give you an idea, half of that is already committed through band deposits. So $220,000 is already out there that if we just cancel and walk away, we probably lose that $120,000. If we cancel and don't do anything, but the governor extends his gatherings order through the end of September, then the governor has shut down our event, and because he shut down our event, we probably get that $120 back. We just don't know. And you know, schools potentially opening around that time, it's a gamble. So if we do no event at all, we lose the $120. If we do no event at all, but the governor's order continues all the way through September, we get that $120 back. If we do the virtual event, then we still pay the $120, but we get something out, and we get the performances. Then you see the rest, other entertainment here and there. There's going to be some lighting needed because they don't have all the fancy lights at MCL Grand, but that is about a third or less than... It's about a fourth that we usually pay for the outdoor festival. The streaming service is 15, cleaning, sanitation, advertising, some stagehands and so forth. So $348 is our estimated total for any of those three options. So.
Direction.
Yes.
Well, I guess I'll go first. As the accountant, you should have started with the money first. The rest of it, I don't start paying attention to us with the money. I like the idea of a virtual event. It allows us to say that we continuously run Western Days. I'm not Western Days' biggest fan, but it's an event that is popular in the city, and this gives us an opportunity to go. If we were going to do it, I would say do it a day, do it with less bands, and treat it like a television show, where you actually, you know, provide, I guess, light on businesses in Louisville and Old Town and our sponsors who do participate, and so people can get to know Old Town. Now, I will say a challenge with the event on television is, I know Spectrum, our channel, does not work. It has not worked for years since we've had Spectrum. So that's something that we need to make sure that all our cable providers actually have it. I mean, we can really buzz it up. I mean, it won't be as watched as we would like it to be, but it allows us to give folks something to do. And if things do turn around a bit, instead of having like, say, using Toyota Park, maybe we could use other venues that need customers to say, "Hey, you can watch the virtual Western Days here," if that's allowed at that time. That gives us more options to spread the love around, have people go to visit other places who live here. I would say do it, treat it like a TV show if we do it, less acts. Use the production value. You can do, like you're talking about no backstage passes. You can do an actual virtual backstage interview, so everybody gets to have that experience. So it's just a whole bunch of ways that you can play with it. That's a lot safer than trying to do it outdoors. It gives us an opportunity to keep the event going. And nobody else is doing anything in September, so it may get us a little more attention that we wouldn't get.
It might. Just quickly to address the point about the cable channel, you're right. Our cable channels are not working right now. They haven't been for quite some time, since the start of this year, back before the start of this year. It's both a hardware and a software issue. It took a long time to track it down. And once we finally tracked it down, the company that we've been using for all these years said it's just something that can't be fixed. The good thing is with the complete replacement of our AD and control system in the council chambers, which is moving forward, we will be back on the air. Our cable channel will have brand-new equipment and software. So that will all be running again well before Western Days. It is up to date? No. No, it's not.
Okay. I definitely am in favor of going forward with the virtual. And I'm with Brandon. The option B with the fewer acts, but making them a little longer. That's what I... That's what I'm for. And I'm, you know, promoting it to for watch parties all around, I think, is the way to go with it. And I like the possibility of railway, railway or railroad park viewing, or maybe the rodeo. I don't know. But something like that would be good if we can, if it's an option.
Councilmember Green, do you have anything?
I agree with what's already been said. I would love to have a two-day, but I question whether or not people are going to watch it on their computers or on TV for two full days. I think we might get more bang for our buck with just going with one. I like the idea of having a lot of smaller watch parties kind of spread out throughout the city at different venues. I'm not opposed to the railroad park thing, but my preference would be to really push people towards going to a place where they are spending money with some of our local businesses. I would prefer that over, you know, if they end up at railroad park. You know, I see them packing a lunch and not really spending any money. So... But other than that, I think the one-day virtual is with the fewer acts for longer periods of time. I think that's the way to go.
Thank you. TJ?
I don't have anything to add, Mayor.
Good. Neil?
I guess I could pitch a lead.
Good.
I have one thing to add. I did, after the agenda was out on Thursday, I mentioned that this was on the agenda for tonight at the Chamber of Commerce Leeds Meeting on Friday morning. And when I just sort of gave a brief summary of what was there. And the idea of having the tamale championship going on was a big... That was a big thumbs up from everybody on the Leeds Meeting, so. Just an FYI.
Okay. Staff, do you have your all thumbs up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're through with that. We're ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we'll go to the regular session. City Secretary, first thing we have, public hearings?
Public hearing number one. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a gasoline service station on 1.80 acres located at 2001 Market Boulevard. Recommendation is that the city council continue the public hearing to August 17th, to the August 17th city council meeting.
Okay. You have a motion to continue the public hearing.
We continue the public hearing to August 17th.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. City Secretary, call it a roll.
I have Deputy Mayor Porton Green made the motion, and Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Porton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones? Deputy Mayor Porton Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay. Motion passed unanimously. Next item, number two.
Continue public hearing. Consideration of an amended concept plan for plan development ordinance number 4255-11-2015 on 90.588 acres located on both the east and west sides of Summit Avenue, north of the Kansas City Southern Railroad, and Grand East Lane with Frontage Road on the west side of I-35E, North Stemmons Freeway, and the east side of McGee Lane. This amended concept plan reflects three developments currently underway within this planned development district, along with the most likely development scenario for the remaining properties. P&amp;Z recommended the concept plan in conjunction with the planned development plan. Plan development amendment is recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the amended concept plan as set forth in the caption above. Planning Director Richard Lukey has a presentation for council.
Okay. Mr. Lukey, you're going to give the presentation for number two and number three. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to start my presentation with just a map of the overall area that shows the context of this 90 acres. As you can see, this site is part of the Northern Gateway. The Northern Gateway boundaries is outlined in yellow. It's bounded by McGee Lane on the west, I-35E on the east, and the KCS Railroad on the south. The village of Louisville, this total acreage within the overall Northern Gateway is about approximately 300 acres. The village of Louisville is outlined in red and contains about 90 acres, and it's situated on the southern portion of the Northern Gateway. I also want to point out some other notable tracts that are yet undeveloped in this area. The first one is about 25 acres just immediately north of the villages at Louisville. It is owned by Alpha Republic Investments, Inc., and that is represented by Jack Graham. It contains about 25 acres, and it has furniture on the hard corner of FM 407 and I-35E. Another notable site is outlined in blue on the north side of FM 407. That is owned by the Louisville 33 Partners, contains about 36 acres, and is represented by Bill Davidson. And finally, I'd like to also call your attention to the very northern location on the map outlined in purple. That is the location of the DCTA Highland Village Lake Louisville Station. The presence of that station had a major bearing on the creation of the Northern Gateway as an urban village that supports kind of an off-site TOD to the station. When I say TOD, I mean transit-oriented development that would support the functions and operation of that station. So as far as some background, planning activities started about 10 years ago involving this area. And we had two approvals of two different plans in 2014. The first one being the 2025 Vision Plan in July of 2014. And that plan adopted big move number seven, identity focal point so along I-35E. That big move created nodes of redevelopment in which new investment, new asset could be directed. Similarly, in November 14, the I-35E redevelopment plan was adopted. And again, that created a focus on the Northern Gateway as a prime redevelopment area. That plan really analyzed all... Uh, that plan really analyzed all of the, the different properties along both sides of I-35, uh, throughout the nine mile corridor in Lewisville. It really analyzed the potential for, um, for the greatest amount of redevelopment that would benefit the, the city moving forward. In 2015, a charrette was held with the major property owners that I had mentioned earlier and other stakeholders of this 300, uh, acre Northern Gateway area. And that charrette really dug deep and discussed all the different issues, the different, uh, opportunities, the different constraints within that 300 acres and really brought everyone together for a common vision and, um, um, and it really to a consensus. Uh, that plan was finalized in July of 2015 and it reflected the consensus established by all of the stakeholders at that charrette. And that was being, uh, that, that consensus really involved, uh, really changing the direction of the, of the zoning in that area, which was light industrial, because this area was envisioned, um, many decades ago as a, as a light industrial area. But that, that, uh, uh, vision really shifted sharply with the, uh, with the Northern Gateway plan, which really envisioned this area as a mixed-use pedestrian-oriented urban village. And again, that really, uh, supports the, uh, the station just to the, to the north, uh, of, of this area. My next slide, um, drills in a little bit more on the background with this particular property. Um, in November of 15, um, the owner, uh, rezoned the property to a planned development for the village at Lewisville, uh, for a mixed-use urban village. Um, and I'll get a little bit more into some of the details about the, the existing PD and proposed PD. Uh, but I do want to note some, some notable, um, uh, time events. Starting about two years ago in 18, uh, staff started having numerous discussions with, uh, with a variety of different developers showing an interest in, um, developing, uh, within, uh, this 90 acres, particularly multifamily developers. And in particularly, um, many conversations were had with, uh, the NRP group. They are a very high-quality, um, multifamily developer throughout the, throughout the nation. And, um, we've worked with them very closely, developed a really, um, um, a, a, a good vision and a good layout that met the, kind of the overall vision of the, of the gateway, uh, Northern Gateway plan, uh, along with, um, kind of the goals, broader goals of the, um, of the PD. And then, uh, that plan did move forward and the, um, the final primary plat and the final plat for that development, uh, were approved in May of 19. About that same time, uh, we entered into discussions with the Huffines Group, uh, for a town home project and a, a multifamily project on the west side of Summit. The NRP project, of course, is located on the east side of Summit. Um, in, in, uh, July of 19, um, along with those other, uh, development groups, um, we, um, uh, developed a detailed open space amenity plan that was prepared by landscape architecture firm Talleyan Associates. And that really started bringing all of these various components into, into focus. And we realized at that point, and all the parties realized that, um, what makes this, uh, will make this, uh, development very, very successful is having a, um, very robust, uh, a, a really, uh, high-quality open space, um, with trails and other open space amenities that really ties all the various components together. And again, tying in with the vision of the Northern Gateway plan and the, um, and the, the original, uh, vision of the, uh, the, the current PD. In November of 19, the final plat for 250 townhomes, uh, be, um, developed by Huffines, uh, was, was approved. And, uh, we are currently now in July 2020, uh, have engineering site plans and a final plat for, uh, the multifamily component on the west side of Summit being developed by the Huffines. Again, that is under staff review. So, uh, this is a little, uh, more detail on the current plan development. Uh, it is not our normal plan development format. It consists of a non-regulatory concept plan. That concept plan only serves as a, of, of an example of the possible development pattern under, uh, that could be developed under the zoning, PD zoning. Uh, the development is, is actually dictated by a form-based code. That code does have a very wide range of possibilities and flexibility for the, of the owners and the future developers uh, in regards to the, uh, development requirements. So the big disadvantage here is that we don't have a lot of predictability on, on, you know, what range of, of, of development in terms, you know, of density and, and building scale, uh, would actually occur. So the proposed PD amendment has been in the works for several months, uh, in coordination with, uh, the majority of the, uh, major landowners now within the, uh, within the 90 acres. Uh, the, the amendment, uh, will consist of a regulatory concept plan that actually reflects the development that is moving forward. It's divided into five sub-districts. Uh, the first sub-district is a Town Home One Subdistrict that is located on the, um, southwestern portion, contains 29 acres, about 32% of the development. Uh, and that, um, will be the Heritage Trail Community being developed by, by Huffines. The Town Home Two Subdistrict is about five and a half acres in the very far western side. That is the current gas well site and that is currently owned by the original developer, um, the F L S C, uh, which is represented by Mr. Stephen Williamson. Um, the, um, the third, uh, sub-district is a multifamily one sub-district and it's kind of in the middle, um, on the west side of, uh, of Summit. And I'll try to move my cursor over there without advancing the slide. This area right in here contains about 22 acres, can, um, um, takes up about 20, almost 25% of the overall development. That will be the Heritage Towers, uh, development. And again, that was being, uh, developed by the Huffines Communities. The multifamily two is the NRP development on the west side or the east side of Summit Avenue. Contains 29 acres and about a third of the overall land area of the PD. Um, that development is called the, the village at Lewisville, reflecting its PD name and it's being developed by, um, it's owned and, and developed by the NRP group. And then lastly, the commercial sub-district is the far eastern component, um, kind of sandwiched between I-35 and, uh, the NRP development. It, uh, contains about 6.64 acres, about 7% of the over, overall development. It is vacant. Uh, it is, uh, still, uh, owned by, um, uh, Mr. Uh, Stephen Williamson, uh, representing the, uh, F L S C. Some other entities, uh, that he controls. So moving on, the entire, the real purpose of this PD amendment, as I said earlier, is to really bring into focus what is actually being built, uh, to provide some, um, um, some predictability on what, what, what we can expect and what others who want to invest in the area can expect. Uh, but the primarily, the, um, uh, benefit is locking in the reduction in the density. The current PD allows 1,625, uh, multifamily units. Um, the, uh, moving forward with the plan, uh, that is proposed takes it down to 647 units. That's a 61, uh, percent reduction in the number of multifamily units. Uh, the third bullet, or second bullet point here is just, um, converting back to our traditional concept plan, regulatory concept plan format that, uh, most of the development community is, uh, is familiar with. Um, and it takes away, um, uh, the non-regulatory concept plan. That's only just, uh, one option of many that could possibly, uh, occur under the, 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 the development standards that have, you know, a wide range of possibilities. Uh, the, really, the third purpose of the amendment is to revise the, uh, thoroughfare plan that is attached to the PD. There is a street that connects, um, the two components on the west side of Summit, uh, that carries a street with a bridge over the drainage channel in the green belt. And with a reduced density, does not make sense to really run a full-blown street, um, between those two sub-districts. Uh, so this amendment replaces that with a pedestrian bridge. We felt it's very important to have the trail connections and the pedestrian connectivity, uh, connecting these, uh, various components of, um, of the, of the plan development. So the next series of slider, just, I'm going to highlight each of the five, um, uh, sub-districts within, within the proposed PD. So this is, um, kind of a, a close-up of the 250 town home lots. Um, and I, I do want to kind of note that, uh, in the current PD, large portion of this sub-district, uh, could have, uh, could have accommodated up to 400 multifamily units. So staff worked very closely with the developers to reduce that density and provide a, a sizable, uh, town home, uh, community, uh, within this overall PD. Uh, the overall 250, uh, units is broken down into 46 front entry lots, 78, um, rear entry lots, uh, that'll have their garage access off alleys, and, uh, 26 muse lots. Those are lots that are, have their garages, garage access off alleys. But their front door, it's not fronting on a public street. It's fronting on a, a major open space that will have a, a trail connection that you would use to, um, to enter your front door for your visitors to, um, to, uh, approach your front door when visiting. And again, I won't go over all of these. I will just kind of hit some of the, uh, the highlights. Uh, the images on the right are the, uh, the elevations, the, the top one are the elevations for the front entry, uh, town home units. The, uh, the image at the bottom are, are the, um, uh, front elevations for the rear entry and muse lots. Um, the minimum lot size is 1,700 square feet. Keep in mind, um, these, these are, are what we would call urban-style, um, type of a layout with very, very small front yards. Um, that, uh, I bring that up because that, um, um, will be brought up in one of the variances associated with, uh, this sub-district. Um, and again, uh, I want to point out that the minimum dwelling unit size is 1,450 square feet. Um, and the extras will be 80% brick veneer. So now, um, uh, I, I want to cover four of the variants associated with this sub-district. The first, uh, variant, um, associated with it is, uh, related to trees. Trees required by the code of ordinances to be planted on residential lots may be planted in the front side or rear yard of a lot. If the lot does not contain sufficient area to plant all required trees, trees may be planted in another open space area located outside of any easements, uh, as approved by the Director of Planning. The image that you see there on the right-hand side is kind of a cross-section of the residential streets within the sub-district. And as you can see, these are going to be tree-lined streets. Um, we work very closely with our engineering department, uh, and with the developer to, um, really give this, um, development a lot of character with these tree-lined streets. We will have trees between the sidewalk and the curb. The water and sewer lines will be kind of under the curb lines. The franchise utilities will be under the sidewalks. So as you can see, the homes will be just a few feet behind the sidewalks, not really allowing a, a lot of room for the one tree that is required for a lot. So the good news is that we will still get the number of trees in our open spaces. Really, this, this variant just kind of relocates the required tree to some other areas. Uh, but we will still, it will not be completely barren. It will have those street trees. Uh, the only, um, areas where you may have a tree missing in that, um, that area between the sidewalk and curb is if there's any conflicts with any, uh, transformer boxes or other utility equipment that would prevent the location of the tree. The second variants associated with the Town Home One Subdistrict is, uh, is in regards to the screening along Summit Avenue. That is to allow, uh, live screening consistent with the attachment shown here, attachment 13, in lieu of the required masonry screening wall. And again, um, the focus has shifted to, uh, Summit Avenue being a major, uh, pedestrian-oriented, um, uh, facility with very wide sidewalks on both sides, uh, lined with shade trees to make it, uh, bearable to walk, uh, along the street in the summer, connecting the various components of the Northern Gateway. And, uh, we feel, you know, having a live, uh, a screen, um, um, along this, uh, town home development is a much more appropriate, um, with that, with that green fill. Um, it will have, uh, masonry columns. You can kind of see the elevation, uh, at the bottom. It'll give a much softer feel on effect. The third, uh, variant associated with this is, uh, deals with parking. The minimum parking requirement is reduced from three spaces per unit to two spaces per unit. Those will be the garage spaces. Um, with a, with a caveat that, that, that the requirement that one guest space be provided for every four units. So I've got kind of a blow-up here showing, um, how guest spaces are going to be scattered throughout, head-in guest spaces off the streets, um, particularly close to, uh, those muse lots where guests can park and they'll have a very short walk, uh, along the trail to get to the front door of the, of the residents that they are, that they are visiting. Uh, there will also be, um, uh, ample on-street parking in the areas in front of the, uh, alley or the rear entry, uh, townhomes, uh, that have their garage access off the alleys. And then the, uh, finally, the fourth, um, variance associated with this, uh, sub-district is, has to do with the timing of the parkland dedication requirement. Uh, that is, actually, this was granted back, um, in late 19. And, but, uh, we are, the date is being changed and pushed back. Um, there have been debate, delays due to, uh, various things, particularly the, uh, the, the current pandemic. Um, and again, that is to let, delay that dedication, uh, to, uh, prior to the, uh, build, it has to be paid prior to the building final for the first town home or December 31st, 2020, whichever occurs first. The variance that you previously approved in late 19 had that dated up June 30th. So we're needing to extend that out for six months. Staff has no objection to, um, any four of these, um, variance requests. So with that, I'll pause for a moment and be glad to answer any questions on the Town Home One Subdistrict or its four associated variances. Okay. If not moving. Are there any questions? If not, moving on to the Town Home Two Subdistrict. Hit the correct one here. Again, but there is not an, uh, uh, defined layout, lot layout or street layout, street layout for the Town Home Two Subdistrict. As you can see, this is the current gas well site. And there is, there are a lot of unknowns associated with, uh, with the existing gas wells. So we, uh, provided as many, uh, parameters as we could. A lot of these were really carried forward from the existing PD. Um, and, uh, the, uh, the, um, the landowner, uh, the surface owner for this, uh, was very pleased, uh, that we had, had done so. Again, we carried all the permitted uses over the townhomes, the single-family detached, zero lot line, single-family, uh, assisted living, uh, and live-work units are primarily, um, what would be allowed in the future, either in conjunction with the existing gas wells or if the gas wells goes away. So again, there's a many different scenarios that really could be painted for this, uh, five and a half acre site. Um, primarily would be limited to 60 or 50, a maximum of 50 single-family, uh, or single family, single-family town home lots or single-family detached lots. Uh, they would be 80% brick veneer. Um, the minimum lot area for the townhomes would be 1,540. Uh, if they are single-family detached, uh, have a minimum lot size of 2,400. Um, we've got the minimum lot widths and depths for, for both iterations. And, uh, again, um, of, uh, reduced front yard setbacks of, of five feet. Uh, if it is a, um, a front entry, um, a rear, uh, rear setback of 20 feet if there's alley entry. And then the dwelling unit size is a little bit smaller than the multifamily one is 1,200 square feet for townhomes and 2,400 square feet if, um, single-family detached is built. So we have a, a pretty, an idea of, of what would, what could go there. I think the only really outlier would be the, uh, assisted living. There are parameters from that on a lot coverage and setbacks and, and, and height as well. There are two associated variances for the Town Home Two Subdistrict. And really, these, uh, mirror the one, uh, two of the variances for the, uh, Town Home One Subdistrict. So the first one is screening. Uh, that would be to allow of the live screening consistent with exhibit 13, um, which is the exact same live screening that is, um, that we were asking for along Summit Avenue. Uh, we felt that would help make this more cohesive and again reinforce the, uh, the, you know, the, the, the green image that is being, um, portrayed in this, uh, in this PD. And then also B also gives, uh, the, um, gives the developer the flexibility to relocate the trees if there's not room on the individual lots, uh, very similar to the, um, uh, variance, um, that was listed in the Town Home One. Uh, I do want to point out that any additional variances required with the development, uh, we're really not going to know what those are until a layout, uh, comes forward with a preliminary plat. So, uh, additional variances may come forward at that time. So with that, I'll pause again to see if there's any, uh, questions for the Town Home Two Subdistrict or its associated two variances. If not, moving on to the Multifamily One Subdistrict. Uh, and again, you can see the image. Um, this is, um, uh, on the right-hand side. It'll consist of three, four-story buildings. Um, it'll contain a maximum of 300. It'll contain a maximum of 300 units. There will be approximately two acres of public open space, uh, fronting, um, Summit Avenue. That'll be kind of the front yard for this development. Other amenities, uh, included will be a 1,700 square foot clubhouse, 900 square foot fitness center, a swimming pool deck, yoga area, dog park, uh, park seating and enhanced landscaping. Most of that is concentrated in the area, uh, kind of right here between, uh, the first two buildings, kind of, um, visible as you, as you enter, uh, the development. Uh, there are four variances associated with the sub district. Um, the first one is a minimum park requirement reduction of 1.6 parking spaces per unit in lieu of the required two parking spaces per unit. Uh, that is a very common, uh, parking ratio that has been used in a lot of more urban style developments. Also here in Lewisville, including, uh, Tower Bay and several of the developments here in Old Town. So staff has no objection to that request. Uh, the second variance request for Multifamily One is to allow paving over the existing 20 inch waterline easement, um, with the owner being responsible for repairing or replacing pavement due to the city repairing or replacing the waterline. The image below shows, uh, the, the location of that existing line. A portion of it will be fire lane and the, and then about the other half of it will be parking spaces. So, um, this, um, um, clause for the owner being responsible for repair or replacement, uh, not only appears in the, um, in the variance here, but it also, uh, appears in the language of the planned development. So it is, it is very, very clear, uh, who is responsible in, in, in that situation. The third, uh, variance request associated with Multifamily One deals with the exterior building materials. Uh, the aggregate total of all exterior wall elevations on the building shall consist of not less than 60% brick veneer and no single wall elevation shall consist of less than 60% brick veneer. Uh, again, this mirrors the variance that was granted for the NRP, uh, multifamily development just, uh, across, across Summit Avenue to the east. And as you can see, we worked very closely with the developer to, um, uh, really design this with a, with a high level of architectural elements that, that, uh, really worked well with that 60% of brick veneer. And again, this will be a four story, uh, of building. Or four, three, four story buildings. Then the final, uh, variance associated with this is, uh, again, um, deals with timing of the Parkland dedication. That dedication shall be made after all amenities are installed in accordance with the open space amenities plan. No certificate of occupancy for any building shall be issued until the Parkland dedication is provided. Uh, any cash in lieu, uh, cash in lieu of Parkland dedication shall be provided at the time of the final plat. So we've worked very closely with, um, both Hough finds and in our pre group to, uh, to work very diligently to, um, make sure that at least fade, the, uh, most prominent phase of the, the open space amenities are, are in place prior to, uh, the completion of, of, of the, of the two, or really of the three major residential components that comprise about, comprise of about 87% of the overall development. We really want these, uh, amenities to be in place so that the future residents can enjoy those and so that all the various components are, are well connected with high quality, uh, pedestrian amenities. So I, I will, uh, go back real quick and we'll pause for just again, one moment, uh, if there are any questions for the Multifamily One, uh, Sub District and the, uh, four associated variances. If not, uh, we'll move on then to the Multifamily Two. Uh, and again, this slide shows, uh, really the two final, um, sub districts. So Multifamily Two and the Commercial Sub District. And these are really tied together because they front together on a pedestrian oriented street, uh, with very wide sidewalks and street trees. That was, uh, basically, um, really in, envisioned to, you know, really be a, a, uh, really a community gathering, uh, space for this overall planned development, overall community. You can see the NRP, uh, development. All of the, the building fronts are engaged with the street and with the sidewalk, um, and, and their, their amenities, um, are basically focused in the middle, uh, with their parking areas. And then likewise with the commercial, the commercial district basically fronts on that sidewalk and engages with that, with, uh, with that pedestrian street. Um, there are opportunities for, um, for restaurants to have, uh, outdoor seating, um, with kind of a patio area envisioned that lines up with spazio, that ties in with the amenity area of, of the, uh, of the multifamily. So we, uh, think that this will, this really has the opportunity to be a, a really great, um, uh, space that people want to hang out, that'll be successful for, for businesses, uh, as well as the residents that, uh, eventually live in this area. Uh, this slide just shows the exterior materials. Again, that was approved, uh, last year for 60% materials. It'll be a three story building with, uh, 347 units. And then these are some renderings. That just kind of gives you a flavor of what that street view would be. Well, uh, that street will consist of, uh, angled parking, uh, wide sidewalks, uh, again, uh, with the buildings brought forward and engaged with that sidewalk. So we felt that's a, you know, very, uh, very important component of, uh, of the overall district. Now, we do want to, uh, make sure that the council is aware that the, uh, owner of the Commercial Sub District, Mr. Stephen Williamson, um, has submitted a development plan slash preliminary plat that does not completely align with the proposed regulatory concept plan in the, in the amendment. Uh, the supplemental is currently under staff review and, and staff is working, uh, within the current regulations, uh, as they apply. We will be working with, uh, with, uh, with the owner. Uh, but it's really unclear, uh, how that will actually, um, um, be approved. And, uh, we just wanted to make you aware of that. And again, we, uh, staff was, uh, committed to working very closely with, uh, with, uh, with the land, uh, not, not only this landowner, but all the landowners to really bring forth the, uh, the best possible quality, uh, and layout for, um, for this whole area. Just a couple of other components that do want to note. This is the new amended PD thoroughfare that replaces the current thoroughfare associated with the current, um, plan development. It does remove the street connection across the street or across the stream, um, that could, that separates the Multifamily One and the Town Home One, uh, sub districts. Uh, this does, uh, bring into focus the residential street network in the Town Home One Sub District with, uh, there are three different, uh, types of street types in, in this area, in the purple, the green and the yellow. Then the blue or the commercial, uh, streets, they are basically primarily the same except for this one here, um, that is, um, being, um, added between, uh, that separates the Commercial Sub District from, um, the Multifamily Two, the NRP development. And again, uh, again, that is a very, very important component, uh, that really, uh, ties, uh, this entire 90 acre PD together and really creates a, a really unit gathering spot for the community. And then, um, the final, um, item I wanted to, um, um, review is the open, uh, open space amenities plan that was developed by, uh, Talley and Associates. And again, it shows a very robust, uh, trail system, uh, with amenities. Um, one of the provisions that we have built in that is just flexibility. As far as the, uh, the, the amenities, we built in flexibility, uh, in the, in the open space amenities, uh, um, depending upon the ultimate approval that we get from the US Army Corps of Engineers. Again, that is not really certain what they will approve. So we've kind of built some, some, um, some, uh, flexibility as far as, uh, being able to ship, uh, ship some locations, maybe substituting some materials. Uh, a lot depends on what we do and will ultimately get approved by the Corps of Engineers. And with that, that completes my overview of the, uh, Plan Development Amendment. And I would be glad to answer any further questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, we'll move on. First item is number two only. Number two, and we have a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Second. Okay, the motion is second. Is there any discussion? City Secretary, could you call the rule?
Mayor Proton Ferguson made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Proton Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all eye votes.
Pass it unanimously. Now we're down to, uh, the next motion. We have a motion to approve.
Yes, the amended concept plan is presented.
Second.
Okay, we'll. Call the rule.
I show Mayor Proton Ferguson made the motion. Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Proton Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all eye votes.
Okay, we'll pass it unanimously. Thank you. Now we're down to number three.
Continued.
Move to second. Go.
You ready?
Yep, go ahead.
Continued public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance amending the Plan Development District Ordinance Number 4225-11-2015 to adopt amended development standards and all attachments thereto, with 10 associated variances on 90.588 acres located on both the east and west sides of Summit Avenue north of the Kansas City Southern Railroad and Grandy's Lane with frontage on the west side of I-35B, North Stemmons Freeway and the east side of McGee Lane. Staff recommends amending the Plan Development to provide concept plans, development standards and other attachments that reflect the current projects and to account for the reduced density. Four variants are requested in the Town Home One Sub District. One, to allow required trees on townhome lots to be planted in open space lots when space is insufficient. Two, to allow live screening with masonry columns along Summit Avenue. Three, to allow two parking spaces for each townhouse unit. And four, to allow the Parkland dedication requirement or cash in lieu of Parkland dedication to be paid prior to the, prior to building, the building final of the first townhome or December 31st, 2020, whichever occurs first. Two variances are requested in the Town Home Two Sub District. One, to allow live screening with masonry columns along McGee Lane. And two, to allow required trees on townhome lots to be planted in open space lots when space is insufficient. Four variances are requested in the Multifamily One Sub District. One, to allow 1.6 parking spaces per unit. Two, to allow paving over the existing 20 inch waterline with the owner being responsible for repairing or replacing pavement due to the city repairing or replacing the waterline. Three, to allow 60% brick veneer. And four, to allow Parkland dedication to be made after all amenities are installed in accordance with the open space amenities plan and before any certificates of occupancy are issued. Planning and studying recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance and 10 associated variances as set forth above.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we got the, uh, all the administrative comments in there and the recommendation. Thanks for that. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay.
I show Councilmember Jones made the motion. Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Proton Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all eye votes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we need a motion to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. What was that name?
With variances.
Move to approve with variances. Okay, thank you. Does that cover it?
Yes, it did.
Okay. That covers it. Is there any discussion? Okay, City Secretary, I'm in chief of the, City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Plan Development District established by ordinance number 422511-2015Z. On November 16th, 2015, comprised of approximately 90.58 acres out of, of land out of the Stephen Riggs survey, abstract number 1088, and the WB Brown survey, abstract number 63, located on both the east and west sides of Summit Avenue, north of the Kansas City Southern Railroad and Grandy's Lane with frontage on the west side of I-35B, North Stemmons Freeway and the east side of McGee Lane. Adopting amended development standards and all attachments thereto, including an amended concept plan, a townhome lot layout, Town Home One and Two Sub District elevations, Open Space Amenities Plan, Town Home One Sub District planting plan, fencing plan, Multifamily One Sub District elevations, Multifamily Two Sub District Concept Plan, Multifamily Two Sub District elevations, Thoroughfare Plan, Street Sections, Town Home One Sub District cul-de-sac layout, Screening at Summit and McGee, Commercial Sub District Concept Plan, Commercial Sub District renderings, and Multifamily Two Sub District Landscape Plan, in order to reformat existing standards for clarity and ease of use and to update certain development standards, including sub districts established, permitted uses, setbacks, lot dimensions, density, architectural standards, parking standards, screening standards, landscaping standards, open space standards, pedestrian network and street and thoroughfare standards within the existing Plan Development District, providing for repealer severability penalty and effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay, thank you. Uh, City Secretary, could you roll call?
I show Councilmember Jones made the motion. Deputy Mayor Proton Green seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Proton Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all eye votes.
Okay, pass unanimously. Thanks everybody for getting through that tonight. City Secretary, those are citizens' vote.
Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address far to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Actually, can only be taken at a future meeting. Mayor, I received no ecomments and we have no one that has, um, indicated they wish to speak.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
It's just visitor's citizen's report. That was just visitor's.
Excuse me, I'm getting ahead of my seat. Now the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or ecomment card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I received no ecomment cards on consent agenda items and we do not show anyone wishing to speak.
Okay. We have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, City Secretary, could you roll call?
I show Mayor Proton Ferguson made the motion and Deputy Mayor Proton Green seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Proton Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all eye votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to D, regular hearings.
Number seven. Number seven, consideration of appointments to various city boards, commissions, committees, consideration of changing the appointments at place numbers one through five at the tax reinvestment zone number two, TERS number two, to be filled by city council members, consideration of appointments to place numbers one through five at the TERS number two, and provide direction on changing the qualifications for place numbers three through five of TERS number one. At the July sixth, twenty-twenty city council meeting, interview teams and assignments were determined. Council is also being asked to consider if they wish to change the membership of TERS number one and TERS number two to be consistent with the more recently created TERS number three and TERS number four. Should they wish to proceed, action can be taken at this meeting on TERS number two and direction given on TERS number one qualifications to come back for consideration at a future meeting. The recommendation is that the city council proceed with appointments, including changing the appointments at place numbers one through five of the TERS number two, to be filled by city council members, and provide direction on qualifications for place numbers three through five of TERS number one as set forth in the caption above. Mayor, all the council have contacted me with, um, the appointment, um, the appointments that they'd like to see. Would you like me to read those?
Let me just have. Does anybody have an objection to the City Secretary reading yells and wishes? No objection? Okay, yes, go ahead.
Okay. All of the places read are, unless otherwise noted, are for full terms. Animal Service Advisory Board, appoint Denise Crafton to place number two, reappoint Amanda Earl to place number four, reappoint Dianne Perkins to place number six. Arts Advisory Board, reappoint Jean Smith to place number two, reappoint Sarah Hicks to place number four, reappoint Tracy Peddaway to place number six, and appoint Brandon Daniels to place number eight. Community Development Block Rent Advisory Committee, reappoint Robin Johnston to place number two, appoint Tanya Carles to place number four, appoint Sharon Sykes to place number five, which is an unexpired term, and reappoint Audra Sclomenski to place number six. Library Board, reappoint Jennifer Lindy to place number two, reappoint Jean Ferguson to place number four, appoint Denise Borges to place number six. Lewisville Housing Finance Corporation, recommend no appointments be made for vacant positions two, three, and four until such time there becomes a need for this corporation. Oil and Gas Advisory Board, reappoint Kathy Stock to place number six, recommend no additional appointments be made for vacant positions placed two, four, and five until such time there becomes a need for this board. Old Town Design Review Committee, reappoint Amanda Ferguson to place number two, appoint Heather Cisarello to place number three, which is an unexpired term, and reappoint Randy Zetsoft to place number four. Park and Library Development Corporation, recommend that place number seven be filled by whomever the library board elects as their library board chairperson. Park Board, reappoint William Scholl to place number two, appoint Rosario Kyler to place number four, appoint Blake Wynn to place number six, and reappoint Jim Domer to place number eight. Planning and Zoning Commission, members also serve as Transportation Board, Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, and the Brownfields Advisory Committee, and the I-35 Overlay Board. Reappoint William Meredith to place number one, reappoint Mary Ellen Metzke to place number three, reappoint Karen Locke to place number six, and appoint Francesca Alwayly to place number seven. TERS number one, reappoint Francesca Alwayly to place number two, reappoint Kelly Stokes to place number four. TERS number two, appoint Bob Troyer to place number two, appoint TJ Gilmore to place number four, appoint Kristen Green to place number five, which is an unexpired term. ZBOA, appoint Audra Sclomenski to place number two, reappoint Douglas Hicks to place number four, and appoint Tom Jensen to alternate place number two. Lewisville Twenty-Twenty-Five Advisory Board, appoint John Deal to place number two, reappoint Amanda Ferguson to place number four, reappoint Kathy Falconberry to place number six, reappoint Karen Locke to place number eight, and leave place number nine vacant.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for call for the vote, I want to, uh, thank all the council members for working on this. It, hopefully, it will be a wonderful season on the committees this year. Do, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the appointments.
Okay. Any discussion?
Can I get clarification on TERS number one, whether you all would like to proceed? TERS number two now is all council, but, I'm sorry, yeah. Um, but did you want to proceed on TERS number one to change the qualifications to be council?
Did you do that one?
Oh, but your amendment.
I don't understand.
So TERS number one currently is not all council, an all-council board. TERS number two now is based upon the recommendation by, um, Deputy Mayor Proton Green and Councilmember Jones, they changed that to a all-council board, or to, uh, primarily council, with the exception of the county appointees. Do you want us to move TERS number one over to be, uh, mostly council board also as TERS two, three, and four now are?
I will include that in the motion, yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any objections to that?
No, I'll second that.
Okay. Did you do anything else?
No, I just need to.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for getting that done.
Let me do a call.
Oh, yes, roll call.
Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Proton Green?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor, those were all eye votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to number eight.
Consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until eleven fifty-nine PM on August third, twenty-twenty. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitated the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond July twentieth, twenty-twenty. The recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Do I have a, uh, motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Seconded.
We have a motion, second. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, City Secretary, if you call the rule.
I show that Councilmember Jones made the motion, and Councilmember Gilmore seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Proton Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all eye votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to reports. Uh, we have the twenty-twenty health report.
Minister Republican.
Public health report.
Uh, the twenty-twenty health, uh, report is required by policy council. Uh, we supply that to you on an annual basis, and it, uh, is a review of your health plan. You remember, it is a self-insured health plan. Uh, the report, there's your information on the rates and changes to the plan, uh, and those type of components. We're available to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, we'll move on. Now we'll go to council reports. Uh, Councilmember Green?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Jones?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Gilmore?
Mayor, tomorrow night at seven o'clock, I'll be doing a quick Facebook Live with the Chamber of Commerce with Lori Fickling, um, just to kind of give folks updates. So if you're, uh, in the business community and want to learn a little bit more about what's going on from the chamber's perspective, I encourage you to hop onto Facebook and check out my, uh, my council page, um, uh, for TJ Gilmore. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, MCL Grand Activities for June fifteenth through July eighteenth, uh, performances. We have acoustic jam sessions presented by the Visual Arts League, um, Fridays beginning July tenth, so already begun. Activities, Watercolor Workshop with Nail, Dorn, Bird, presented by Visual Arts League, August fifth through seventh. A Garden Secrets Workshop is scheduled for August sixth, has been canceled. And Acoustic Jam Songwriter Challenge, uh, presented by Visual Arts League is, uh, scheduled for the seventh. Our exhibits, we have Fresh Ideas, presented by Visual Arts League of Lewisville, July fifteenth through August eighteenth, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, Councilmember Troyer?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay. City Manager, did you have anything? Forgot to ask you there.
I do not have anything, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Uh, City Secretary, will you read the closed session language?
Closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D., one, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two Real Estate, Property Acquisition, two, Section five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations.
Okay, we'll go on to closed session now. We're in open session. Is there any action to be taken?
To adjourn.
Motion seconded to adjourn.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Who seconded that?
That would be Brandon.
Uh, thank you, Brandon.
Okay. Okay, uh.
I show Mayor Proton Ferguson made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Proton Green?
Aye.
They were all eye votes, Mayor.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. That's good.